We will call to order the Board of County Commissioners. This is our regular meeting for April 25th, 2013. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to have a full house. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. It is a symbol of perfect friendship among United Nations.
Before we get started today, I just want to send out our prayers and our thoughts to all those that were murdered, killed, and maimed in Massachusetts and Texas this last week. And if you'd please join me in just a moment of silence for those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any changes need to come on the agenda, gentlemen?
No, not at all.
Can I get a motion? So move. Second. There's a motion, second, to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, we would invite public input. If anybody would like to speak before the commission that's not on or already on the agenda, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I know that Cliff Cowboys and Coach Pete Schach are on the agenda. Later on, I've got a different meeting to attend, so I'd just like to say a few things. Of course, I'd like to congratulate them on their efforts at the state basketball championship. But I know that you're going to honor Coach Schach today. I was privileged enough to be on his first state basketball championship team. And I've known him for going on 35 years now. And what I'd like to talk about is some different things. We talk about, in a lot of our meetings, we talk about impacts on our high school students and the impacts that some of their mentors have as far as economic developments, concerned community development, those type of things like that. And so I think it's my opportunity to say that Coach Schach, outside of the basketball floor, I think his achievements are just as important as the ones he has on the basketball floor. I'm talking about his family, his Christian life. As a teacher, a lot of people don't know that he's a heck of a good math teacher and has been an influence on a lot of, not only student athletes, but students as a whole for 35 years at Cliff School. And so as one of his former students and one of his former players, I would just like to recognize all of his achievements off the basketball floor as well as on the basketball floor.
My name is Rebecca Estrada, and I am the anchor site manager for... My name is Rebecca Estrada. I'm the anchor site manager for a systems of care project that Grant County has been involved in for quite a few years now. And I just wanted to say that May 9th is Children's Mental Health Day. Grant County is going to celebrate it in that we're going to do our second annual scavenger hunt here in partnership with the Wellness Coalition. And I will leave these flyers. And I... There will be a proclamation that will come forward requesting that Grant County recognize May 9th as Children's Mental Health Day and May Children's Mental Health Month. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Make sure that any of us have a proclamation quickly because that's actually the day of our meeting is the 9th. That's the earliest we can get it passed.
He already has it. And we've exchanged emails, and I was supposed to be on the agenda today, so...
Oh, okay.
We just had a little mix-up.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Hi, Ronnie.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Ronnie Barnfine. I'm the volunteered spokesperson for the Santa Rita subdivision. The residents and landowners would want me to thank you guys for your time and information and help with the project in our improvement district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anybody else for public input today? Yes, Chair? You get your own chance at the end, you know.
Just real quick, now that we have an audience, I'd like to just go over this because a lot of people leave after their portions. I just want to remind the public of our drug take-back this Saturday in regards to prescription medications, any extra stuff that you have at home that you want to dispose of. We will be at Walgreens from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, this Saturday, the 27th. No questions asked. You can bring in and drop off any medication or prescriptions that you are not using any longer. We would rather collect them rather than them being flushed or thrown in the trash. So I encourage you, if you have them, just to bring them by and drop them off there at Walgreens. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Okay, last chance for public input. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on then. We're going to move to minutes. Approve or disapprove the March 19th work session minutes, the March 21st regular meeting minutes, and the April 2nd special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 19th, 2013 work session minutes. We approve the March 21st, 2013 regular meeting minutes and approve the April 2nd, 2013 special meeting minutes.
And I second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the March 19th, the March 21st, and the April 2nd, 2013 minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Review the 2013 financial reports. John, go ahead and go through the financial reports again. Okay.
In your package, you have the financial reports ending March 31st, 2013. We'll start with the general fund. Cash balance as of July 1st, 2012 was $4,108,55. The year-to-date revenues are $5,745,543. Year-to-date transfers of $302,000. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $2,481,291. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $4,052,403. Leaves a cash balance as of March 31st, 2013 of $3,010,703. With projected transfers in and out, revenues, expenditures, and salaries through June 30th, 2013 of a negative $124,130. Leaves a cash balance as of June 30th, 2013 of $2,886,574. Less the required reserve of $2,807,123. Leaves a surplus of June 30th, 2013 of $79,451. On page two is the budget of revenues. As of March 31st, we've collected 63.13% of the budget of revenues for the year. On page three is the budget of transfers. And as of March 31st, we've completed 19.36% of the budget of transfers. The next page is the road department. The road department started the year July 1st, 2012 at $425,180 with year-to-date revenues of $991,565. Transfers year-to-date of $300,000. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $197,155. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $913,041. Leaves a cash balance as of March 31st of $606,549. With projected transfers in, revenues, expenditures through June 30th, 2013 of $122,495. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $729,044. Less the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus of $598,109. The next page is the corrections fund. They started the year July 1st, 2012 at $394,379. Year-to-date revenues are $686,362. Operating expenditures year-to-date are $422,441. Salaries and benefits year-to-date are $1,289,725. The cash balance as of June 30th... Or, excuse me, it's March 31st, 2013 is a negative $631,425 with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers in through June 30th, 2013 of a cause of $645,093. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $13,667. So far, we've done 0% of the budgeted transfers, and that is why we're showing a negative balance as of March 31st. We transfer money down from the general fund to offset the operating costs that are not brought back in revenues because they only bring in about half the revenues they need to operate there.
Moving on to the expenditure report. John went over the extraordinary expenses in the expenditure check report. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the April 22nd, 2013 expenditure report.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the April 22nd, 2013 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. With the commission's consent, I would like to do F and G, and then we can present those if it's all right with y'all. Okay. So let's go ahead and do the approvals on these first. Item F is approve or disapprove the proclamation recognizing the Cliff High School Cowboys. And at this time, Randy, if you could read that for us, I'd appreciate it.
The governing body of the county of Grant, having learned of the accomplishments of the Cliff High School basketball team, does hereby extend its recognition. And whereas the Cliff High School Cowboys of the Silver Consolidated School District in Cliff, New Mexico, earned the state championship in the Class A category of the 2013 New Mexico Activities Association State Basketball Tournament held in Albuquerque, New Mexico in March 2013. And whereas the Cliff High School Cowboys scored 49 points, earning them their 10th state championship. And whereas the players and coaches of the Cliff High School basketball team are to be commended for their good sportsmanship, teamwork, and commitment to excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the county of Grant, that congratulations and recognition is extended to the Cliff High School Cowboys for their outstanding athletic accomplishments. Signed and sealed this 25th day of April, 2013 by the Grant County Board of Commissioners in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Thank you very much. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve or disapprove this proclamation?
So move.
And I probably second.
There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the proclamation recognizing the Cliff High School Cowboys basketball team. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, approve or disapprove the certificate of recognition to Pete Schach.
I make a motion to approve the recognition for Coach Pete Schach.
Again, I probably second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve a certificate of recognition to Coach Pete Schach. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Well, I'd just like to congratulate the team and Pete Schach for all these successful seasons and especially for this year. We congratulate you. You're a big inspiration to a lot of us, and we know that you are a future, and our future is in good hands with kids like yourselves. I shouldn't even say kids, young men like yourselves. And thank you for representing Grant County so well in the state tournament.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Coach, we appreciate you. You've changed the face of this community, that being the county, in your endeavors and the young men that you've coached and the young women that you've taught and been a mentor too. We're proud of you, and we're proud that now we're going to have a third generation in the shot in the saddle, and we appreciate that. So big shoes, but there's no doubt in my mind he can fill them. So congratulations.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sure.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... And we have veterans here who are the true.
Just so happens, the next thing on the agenda is to approve or disapprove of proclamation declaring May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen as American Legion Day. Randy, can you read that proclamation for us?
Whereas the American Legion was incorporated and chartered by Congress in nineteen nineteen as a patriotic service organization devoted to mutual helpfulness and it is the nation's largest wartime veteran service organizations. And whereas the mission of the American Legion is being committed to mentoring youth and sponsorship of wholesome programs in communities, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting strong national security, and continued devotion to our fellow service members and veterans. And whereas the National Commander, James E. Coontz of the American Legion will make an official visit to the Allingham Golding American Legion Post eighteen in Silver City, New Mexico. And whereas during his official visitation, Commander Coontz will recognize and confer with members of the American Legion Post eighteen and all veterans who honorably served in the armed forces. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Grant County Board of Commissioners that Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, is proclaimed as American Legion Day throughout Grant County in honor and recognition of the official visitation of National Commander James E. Coontz done this twenty-fifth day of April, two thousand and thirteen in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Thank you very much, Randy.
Okay, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, as American Legion Day.
Mr. Chairman, it gives me great honor to make the motion to approve the proclamation declaring May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, as American Legion Day.
In my honor to second it. Is the motion a proper second to approve May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, as American Legion Day? Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Gentlemen, would you like to come up and so we can present this proclamation to you?
Thank you. No problem. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. No problem. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank 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 you.
Okay, so we're not done with, um, with the American Legion Post, uh, eighteen. At this time, uh, Mr. Ray Davis is going to address the commission on a proposed change of the name of the Grant County, uh, Business Conference Center. Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have some information. You gave us a proclamation and, uh, some things, so I have some information for you if you don't mind. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and certainly thank you for the job that you folks do to, to run this great county of ours. As we pass by the building we see being renovated, uh, one of our members of the American Legion, uh, wrote a letter to me in asking if it was possible that we could see a name change on the building. Uh, that was a little over a month ago and Luis Perez had, uh, asked our post if we would, uh, pursue this and I did. Um, I wrote a letter and I, I think you've all seen that. The letter said that, uh, we'd like to see the name to be the Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center with a area set aside for the battalion death mark survivors. I know that there's been a lot of people in the county that, uh, have been on the battalion death marks and it's been commemorated several times, but in the past six weeks going over this, I realized that if we do that, then we leave out some other people. And, uh, what I would like to see and what, uh, the, the information that passed around to you are letters from, um, Drew Dix, who's Medal of Honor recipient, Vietnam, uh, the American Legion posts that are in the county, the VFW, the Marine Corps League, Western New Mexico University vets, um, Steve Pierce, our congressman, Diane Hamilton, Howie Morales, um, Joe Shepherd from the university, the Rotary Club, and also the Kiwanis Club. There's a lot of community support behind recognizing veterans. Since this building is going to be the focal point of activities in the county and it's centrally located here in the county seat, we thought, um, meeting with the rest of the veterans in the county, uh, the other day, we thought that it would be nice to be a veterans' memorial, you know, way to honor veterans, not any specific group of veterans, but all veterans, past, present, and future, from all of the branches of the military service. And as you look at those letters, you'll see that the support is there. But I'd like to read something to you. It says, "The cost of freedom has been paid for the, for with the blood of American men and women who have served and died for our great country. Every day we should thank God that they will, and have never failed us." When I went into service, I took the same oath as John Cabernet, United States Army Medal of Honor recipient. Each one of us that are here today and those veterans in the county took that same oath. There is nobody that takes the oath to go into the military service that says, "I'm gonna go in and receive a Medal of Honor." We all put our lives on the line. All of us gave a part of our life to serve our country. We would appreciate it very much because I know it's your decision as to what the, the building is gonna be named. And I know, uh, from our conversations that it has to be a business and conference center. If it happened to be, your choice to make it the Veterans Memorial, uh, Business and Conference Center, or whatever you choose to name it, um, that choice is yours. I would certainly hope, uh, speaking for the rest of the veterans in the county, that you would honor us. And that's, I appreciate that very much.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis, come on up.
My name is Luis Perez. I served as an artillery officer during the war in Korea. Members of the Grant County Commission and staff and to the general public. A, an honor to the veterans of Grant County's long overdue for all the wars. I think that the name Grant County Veterans Memorial Center would be appropriate. A conference center involves many things. It is a place for not only business meetings, but also for gatherings, anathema, or you might say anatheneum, for the exchange of ideas, meetings, workplaces, uh, trade centers, anything like that. So it would be appropriate that the work conference would encounter, would, uh, encircle all of their names and we shouldn't add any other superfluous names. Someone asked, "Is this name marketable? Do you market, do you not market, or do we not recognize patriotism, duty, service, and sacrifice?" It is not up to people to say that this name would not be marketable, but once the name is selected, it is up to our tourism promotion, economic development people and all others to market and to sell that name and to bring, bring people here to Silver City. This is the place, and I'm hoping that at the entrance to this conference center, that there be an appropriate room designated for displays of patriotic displays relating to all the wars that, uh, we have served in. Certainly, you can see the service by going out to the cemetery at Fort Beard. Certainly, we have representatives here dating from World War II and to all the wars. So I would request that you give it careful thought and remember what this Veterans Memorial Conference Center would stand for. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anybody have anything, any comments? Don't? Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda then.
Yes, I just wanted to let, so that the veterans know, um, just to say you've gone by forgotten, uh, we didn't have it as an action item on today's meeting, it was discussion so they could present it to you. And then we have the meeting on May ninth. So if the commission wishes to take action on a name change, we can have it on the May ninth meeting or a later meeting, but because you're not voting today, it doesn't mean you're dismissing their suggestion. It was just as a discussion item and that's why you're not taking action to vote on the name today. Right. So I just wanted that.
And, and the other thing you probably ought to, ought to know is it's, it looks kind of finished on the outside. It's probably a year away from being finished on the inside. And actually, we're going to, we're, we're in the middle of trying to sell those bonds to finish the inside, so, um, one of the ways for us to get that finished and, and your dream to come true is to help us with that bond issue. So, uh, that'll be coming up in probably...
September?
September, late August, sometime like that, before we even, uh, go out for the bond issue, which we'll actually get the money in January, so then we can start the bidding process. So we're probably, at best case scenario, a year from even finishing the building. Um, at, at that time, if the commission chooses to dedicate it with a new name, I think that would be the proper time to do it and have a big dedication. Uh, we may choose to do that prior to that, or rename it prior to that, but I think the dedication needs to come when it's finished. So, do you guys have any questions of us?
Would you, would you like us to be there at the, at the, you said, May ninth meeting? Uh, if, if it's on the agenda to change the name that day, uh...
Yeah, we can contact Mr. Davis.
We can call, we can, we'll call you, uh, have somebody call you if we're going to have it on the agenda that day?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one other thought I, I failed to mention...
Okay.
Is, um, I believe that the veterans organizations in Grant County, should you choose to do this, uh, and any memorial cost would, we'd be able to raise the funds for. And it would not be anything that, uh, the citizens of this county would be, be responsible for.
So you're talking about the decorations of the room and maybe a plaque or something like that?
If, whatever we do, we would want to bring before you and, uh, for your approval, so that this is something that's, that's fitting for the building, for the county, and for the veterans.
I'll tell you the truth, I mean, the drawings for the inside of the building aren't even done yet. So, you're at the right time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to formally request that we put it on the, on the next meeting.
Okay. Change?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Alright, so it'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you guys. Sir?
Maybe we can...
Absolutely, you may leave at, at your own will. Or you can stay and, and finish the civics lesson, I don't know.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is a, uh, update on the animal shelter. Ms. Sexton, how are you doing today, Heidi?
Good morning. And thank you to, to all of our veterans. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good. I'm Heidi Sexton, President of the Board of Directors of the High Desert Humane Society. And I apologize for the delay in getting this report to you. Um, your meeting times and my meeting times weren't matching up, so this is the year-end report for two thousand twelve at the end of April, so, um, uh, you have two, two spreadsheets in front of you, and the first one, which is sort of a pinkish colored one, and these are for the actual calendar year, they're not for the fiscal year. Um, the first spreadsheet is a breakdown of the dog and cat intake, um, for two thousand twelve, and it also breaks it down further by number of impounds and strays, uh, the number of those that were returned to owner, and then also the owner turn-ins. And these numbers are reported to Gilbert Hilton on a monthly basis in accordance with our agreement. Um, the second sheet has the year-end totals comparatively going back to two thousand and seven. And as you can see, we were having a, a good decrease in the number of intake animals, and then in two thousand and eleven, we had a jump up. Um, I think that was partially because there were several, um, hoarder situations that brought in a large number of animals in that year, but it's going back down again. So, also, um, during two thousand and twelve, we collected eight thousand one hundred and seventy dollars in licensing fees and two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars in impound fees. And the animal control officer responded to five hundred and four animal complaint calls. So, is there any questions on any of those sheets?
Any questions? No.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I was looking at your numbers that you take in. Do you guys have numbers on, how many are adopted out? Because I see of returned to owner eighty-nine of them, but of the six hundred and fourteen dogs that you've taken in, do, are you adopting out a bunch, or are they...
Right now, overall, the, the, just in short, how, how it works, the animal shelter division of the Humane Society takes in the animals from the county, from town of Silver City, from Hurley, uh, Santa Clara, and then the, the ones that are available for adoption that are adoptable animals get transferred ownership to the society, and we track those as a whole. And as a whole, we're, we had, uh, been averaging around a forty percent adoption rate. Um, the last couple months, which this is two thousand and thirteen, we've had as high as sixty to seventy percent adoption rate, which is, is really good. Really good. Even at forty percent, that's almost three times the national average.
That's great.
So...
Any questions for... Thank you for what you, thank you very much.
That's all right. Thank you for the information.
Okay. She's got some more, she's got...
Yes, I, um, our agreement does expire on June thirtieth, so Mr. Sari will be, will be getting together to, to review that, and I'll be back in here. I also gave you an evacuation tip card that you have there, and I would like the commission to know as well as the general public that the High Desert Humane Society has a very extensive emergency preparedness plan. We are set up to take in animals in the event that there's an emergency in Grant County where people have to be evacuated, and a lot of times, they cannot take their animals to evacuation, uh, centers. So we're prepared to take in those animals. During the Quail Ridge Fire, we took in fifty-one animals. Um, we are set up to quickly be able to take in close to two hundred animals. Um, this last Sunday, we had a mock disaster and ran through our program, and I'm glad to announce that we now have three full teams so that we could work twenty-four hours around the clock, taking in animals and caring for the animals of the community as necessary. Um, I also, one last plug is, I would like to say that the High Desert Humane Society this year is celebrating their fortieth anniversary. We've been caring for dogs and cats in this community for forty years. And our push this year is to raise forty thousand dollars just for our HALP program. Our HALP program is the Spay and Neuter Assistance Program for Grant County. Um, if you would like to support spay and neuter and support the HALP program, we'll gladly take your monetary donations. You can also shop at our thrift store, which is downtown at one oh eight North Bullard. All the proceeds from the thrift store go into our HALP program. You can also purchase a spot in our upcoming calendar. All of those proceeds go to the HALP program. Like I said, our goal is to raise forty thousand dollars for spay and neuter assistance, and that would all go right back into the community in the way of spay and neuter assistance. And if anybody needs help with spay and neuter, come on down to the Humane Society and we can issue you a coupon. Our coupons pay up to, uh, seventy dollars in assistance.
I just have one other question, because I thought of it, somebody called me at home the other night. When it's after hours or you guys are closed on a Sunday, uh, Saturday night, is there a place somebody can take an animal? Because somebody had a stray in our neighborhood and they called me and asked me, um, and they thought they were gonna have to hold him until Monday, and so a lot of people will just, you know, let the dog run because they don't want to be responsible for the animal until Monday morning. And I know you guys used to have an outside fenced-in area for the officers that could go in. Is there something where the public can take an animal?
There is no place for the public to drop off an animal, and we don't have an outside facility anymore because we found people were dropping them off, and if we're not coming in, in the afternoon and it's hot and, and, um, there was concern, so they're not, what they need to do is call Central Dispatch, and Central Dispatch Police or Sheriff's Department can pick those animals up and take them in. They do have the ability to get into the facility and drop the animals off inside, and we have several runs that stay set up for that purpose.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate what you do because as a police officer in sixty-eight, you went there and we were the dog catchers. We had to go to the flea shop where the museum is, and we would pick up the pole and go get the dog. So, uh, yeah, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, due to Taiwan, uh, Taiwan was a part of our, yeah, our, our control, and, uh, we had a representative from, from the organization that was there to explain. But I, I did want you to, to touch a little bit on, on, I mean, everybody thinks it's just cats and dogs, but it's not just those types of animals. Am I correct with horses and lesser types of animals, or what are the types that you can take in for evacuation?
Um, during the evacuation, we do only take in dogs and cats. However, we have taken in goats and guinea pigs and bunny rabbits and pigeons. Um, we're not really set up to handle those types of animals. However, we do have a networking, uh, system in place where we have, uh, numbers and, and names and locations of people that can house livestock, horses, uh, goats, enoos. Uh, we, we generally take them in and then transfer them immediately, although it helps us if you can, if you call, get that information, and then you can take them directly to that evacuation location. We do work with, um, the Backcountry Horsemen's Association because they do have a large animal evacuation plan in place.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much for coming by and giving your report. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Worldist Coalition, Mr. Lisa Jimenez, to give us an update on the Nonprofit Resource Center. Lisa, how are you today?
Hi.
Good.
Uh, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Manager Sari, staff, particularly my technology manager, Robert, thank you so very much, and the, the audience as well. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, be here with you this morning, particularly to thank the county for your support of the nonprofit sector, and particularly for our office as well, as we, you know, our job is to work with and strengthen the nonprofit sector. You know, we all know the county really does not want to be or, or should not be, uh, in the business of, for example, providing, uh, you know, shelter to victims of domestic violence, or services to, um, let's say, adults with developmental disabilities, and yet those services are so, so very important to the quality of life for all of us here in the county, so we really sincerely appreciate your support. Next slide, please. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? This mic seems a little strange. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Um, I just want to take a couple of minutes to really talk about, uh, what we do at the Nonprofit Resource Center, for those of you who don't know. We are essentially, we function as really the small business development center and essentially the Chamber of Commerce for the nonprofit sector. Um, our primary function is capacity building, and that just simply means that we help nonprofit organizations do what they do more efficiently, more effectively. We strengthen them. Um, everything we do is based on national best practices, but we take those and adapt them to the rural, uh, New Mexico nonprofit environment. Uh, the NOCA, we, we call it the NOCA and COCA Capacity Assessments. We use, these are assessment tools that we use at the beginning of any intervention, and NOCA stands for Nonprofit Organizational Capacity Assessment. And that essentially, it assesses the nonprofit organization, and that gives us a good roadmap for developing our work plans and, um, addressing those areas of need with particular organizations. The COCA is essentially the same tool, but we use that for community coalitions and collaborations to really test readiness for moving forward with a community, uh, change initiative, for example. Um, and I am happy to say too, that our COCA, and, and both the NOCA and the COCA are now being used at the national level with, uh... being used at the national level with the Center for Health Innovations and the National Reach Coalition. And everything we do is tailored to meet the need of the individual client, so there's a lot of flexibility in the models that we use, and, you know, we, we, our services are comprehensive, generally mid to long term, and again, there's a lot of flexibility built into the model. We offer a broad array of services and methods, specifically, as I said, designed to meet the needs of each client. Next slide, please, sir. Specifically, some of the services we offer, we have one of our most popular programs is free curbside consulting. That happens every Wednesday morning, 9:00 AM to noon. It's on a walk-in basis. Anyone can come into our offices and ask any kind of question that they need to, with regard to a nonprofit organization. And I think probably one of the most important services that that piece provides is we're, we're able to connect people who have great ideas and a lot of passion for what they do, with, oftentimes with existing nonprofit organizations. So rather than creating yet another non-for-profit, we're able to connect them with existing nonprofits, to, to add programs and make those stronger. And we do a lot of, you know, we work with a lot of different individuals on a lot of different, um, subject matters. We have a subscription service online called the Foundation Directory Online. A lot of clients will come in there, and it's a searchable database to look for funding opportunities. We just had recently Tom Hester for the Festival of the Written Word in there, which I think is going to be an important economic development and tourism opportunity for the county. So that, it's an important service, and people love it. We've had, to date, we've served about 200 people through that initiative alone. The Strategic Consulting Engagements, that's also a very, very critical piece, particularly for the nonprofit organizations. It is currently underwritten by Freeport MacMoran. And the way that works is Freeport, you know, again, we, we use the capacity assessment, we develop our work plans, and then we connect the, our client, the nonprofit organization, with members of our consulting community, to address those specific needs that that organization requires, and the Freeport funding underwrites that service. So we pay our, our consultants a reasonable wage, or not wage, but consulting fee, and then the Freeport money underwrites that. The client ultimately pays $20 an hour. Now, there's some non-for-profits, of course, that can pay more than that, but there's many non-for-profits that really, really, really appreciate the opportunity to improve their services for a very, very reasonable amount of money, and it's a very popular program, very successful. And currently, our two biggest clients working with us in that are Strategic Consulting Engagements, our LifeQuest is one of the larger clients we're working with at the moment, and the Clay Festival. The Clay Festival, we have a consultant that's helping them with their marketing initiatives, and another consultant who is working with them on funding, to make sure that we're able to provide that festival on an annual basis. Our consultant community of practice, these are vetted consultants who have a lot of experience with everything from business practices, grant writing, board, and leadership development, you name it. We have consultants who are able to, to help. We also offer workshops and trainings. At this very moment, we have a full house back at the Wellness Coalition with Sunny Yates and another consultant, Jess Etuypaski. They're offering effective meeting management right now. We also offer a mix of face-to-face consulting with virtual methods. We have a lot of online resources. We do a lot of webinars and things like that, that we often are able to open up to the larger community. Now, I'd like to just shift gears, unless there's any questions at this point. I just want to shift gears now and talk about our current scope of work with the county. The goal really is to partner with the Grant County Community Health Council to build community capacity, to address the health council priorities and community needs as identified by their terrific 2012 community health survey. Our activities to date on that, on that, in that process, we've had five meetings thus far with the Health, Health Council. We're meeting again this afternoon, actually, at our, at the Wellness Coalition. We've met with the Executive Committee. And on the 14th of March, myself and my predecessor Nikki Zeiner, we presented a collective impact workshop to the community. There were over 30, there were 32 people in attendance at that workshop, many of them nonprofits, but we also had business people there, community members, and a consensus emerged at the end of that workshop, and the group really said that they would like to see us move forward with asset mapping exercises around the top three health council priorities that were, or not health council priorities, but the, the top three priorities that were identified by the Health Council's community survey in 2012. And those top three priorities identified in that survey were workforce development, affordable housing, and activities for children and youth. So at that point, we, you know, the, the consensus was, people really want to work together. There's a lot of civic engagement, a lot of civic pride, as you all know, and I can say that I know the nonprofit sector, they are very, very interested in moving forward on some of these issues. We then reached out to Priscilla Lucero at the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments. She's been tremendously supportive and very, very helpful. We, she and I sat down and organized the Housing Asset Mapping Meeting, which is going to happen at the Cog offices on May 22nd at 1:30 in the afternoon. And essentially, for those of you who are not familiar with asset mapping, it's really a tool to identify the resources, services, and maybe service gaps in a particular area. So we have the Affordable Housing Meeting scheduled, and then on May 7th, we're going to be holding an asset mapping workshop at the So-Cold Theater, 10:00 AM to noon, May 7th, and that'll be facilitated by myself and Sam Castello from the Wellness Coalition. So essentially, and with those, with those asset mapping meetings, what we're doing is really laying some groundwork for the Health Council as the Plan and Profile Committee moves forward in identifying those empirical data sets, and also identifying the, putting together the data to really identify the Health Council priorities for this year. Robert? So let me just shift gears for another moment here to talk a little bit about collective impact. Large-scale social change really requires that all sectors of the community work together. I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer. We're all in this together, and, you know, any outcome is certainly going to be more beneficial if we have all of the players at the table. And collective impact, it's, it's, it's a framework for community change that has really just caught fire over the last few years. This was, it's a concept that was introduced back in 2011, and since that time, it's just really caught fire, not only in the United States, but globally. And as you can see here from the slide, it really is, it's a commitment of a group of important actors from different sectors to a common agenda. Everyone essentially aligns up together to achieve a common goal. Next slide, please. Are we ready to collaborate? Now, collaborate, well, we are ready to collaborate. A lot of people say, "Well, we're already doing that." And we all know, there's, there's, we have examples of things that have worked well, you know, when we've collaborated, and things maybe that haven't worked as well as we would have liked. Unlike most collaboration, collective impact initiatives are different in that they offer a centralized infrastructure, dedicated staff, which is a really, really crucial point, and a structured process that leads to a common agenda, shared measurement, continuous communication, and mutually reinforcing activities. You can see here, again, these are the, really the key pieces of a successful collective impact initiative. A common agenda, shared measurement, mutually reinforcing activities, all of the, everyone involved in the process still continues to do what they do best, but it all comes back to that shared common agenda of the larger collective. There's continuous and open communication to really foster trust and understanding, so everyone's always on board. It's a very transparent process. And then finally, a very, very critical piece of this framework is what's, what they call term a backbone support. And this can take lots of different forms, but essentially, this is the dedicated staff piece, where there's, and it can take different forms, you know, maybe an individual, a couple of different organizations, the key that they are dedicated to that initiative, and they are neutral. Next slide, please. So again, and just real quickly, the backbone organization, what, what its functions are, are to guide the vision and strategy, they're really the firekeepers. They're the ones that keep the whole group focused with their eyes on the prize. The shared, I'm sorry, you know what, I can't even read that very well from here. Effective, they, they also make sure that there's a, an agreement on the shared data measurements, working to build public will, advance policy, and secure funding. And again, types of organizations, sometimes they, they may be funders. There's a, a very large initiative in Cincinnati, Ohio, for example, that the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, they are actually serving as the backbone organization and funding that, that initiative. Sometimes, you know, in, in our case here, we're hoping that it will be the Health Council with our office, and maybe some other organizations, because again, the, the key is neutrality. Next slide, please. So just a couple of examples of where collective impact has been successful. The first example is, I chose because it's a rural example. 80,000 people, rural Massachusetts. They started with a drug-free communities grant to reduce underage drinking, teen substance abuse. And I have a long history, actually, in substance abuse prevention, and I can tell you, I've never seen these kind of reductions back in, in Chicago, where I came from, or here in Grant County. I mean, 31% drop in teen binge drinking, 32% in teen smoking, and 18% in youth marijuana use. Those are, in the world of substance abuse prevention, those are huge numbers. And then the second example that I, I chose, this is a global initiative to improve nutrition. You can see some of, a few of their successes. They've had 667 million people who are eating more nutritious foods with some very, very simple solutions, but this is a multi-continent effort, but they've used the collective impact framework. Next slide, please. This just talks a little bit about the phases of collective impact. You know, obviously, if we were to move forward with something like this, we're, we're already working a little bit in Phase 1 with that asset mapping, to put together the, you know, the, some of the baseline data, the Plan and Profile Committee, and then identifying champions and key members of different cross-sector, the different cross-sector organizations. And of course, we're hoping that Grant County will, will be one of those. Next slide, please. So there's a few preconditions to really working in a collective impact framework. One is an influential champion, and probably more than one influential champion. And again, we're really hoping that Grant County will be that champion, or one of those. Adequate financial resources, of course, you know, these things take time. This is, the collective impact is a longer-term process. This is not a quick fix, and a sense of urgency for change. You know, what are those, where, what are those areas that we really, really feel are our most pressing needs? You know, what are the, the most important areas that we would like to maybe use a framework such as this to really affect change, whether it be affordable housing, economic development, workforce development, education perhaps? Next slide. Finally, a vision for change, what some next, potentially next steps might be. Again, you know, the Grant County Community Health Council and our shop work together as a backbone organization. I think that, again, from that collective impact workshop that we did back in March, the group really felt that, that they really want the Health Council to be involved in this, and they see us as well as a neutral organization too, that has the, the ability to help move an initiative like this forward. And then, of course, there would need to be agreement on what are those community issues or needs to be addressed. There may be some others that we really haven't, that maybe not necessarily, that didn't necessarily come out of the community survey in 2012. Cross-sector group forums to address whatever issues the group or community decides to create change around. The data analysis to identify resources and service gaps. I mean, part of that, again, is the asset mapping process and the county's Plan and Profile Committee, which, by the way, I am now going to be participating in that Plan and Profile Committee, so that we'll have some good synergy between our shop and the Health Council. And then potentially, Community Enhancement Fund funding to bring in some additional, perhaps some outside support from the experts who, who are, have been working in collective impact initiatives around the country. And then another thought would be, perhaps, once a group, a cross-sector group is formed, is conducting the, an assessment to see, you know, where are our strengths, where are our weaknesses, and where are the, where are the gaps, and how can we move forward to, to address those. Again, I, you know, I've been in this community now for 12 years, and I have never, ever seen a community more civically minded, more willing to move forward and put their effort and resources and time and energy into making their community a better place. So with that, and if there are, unless there's any questions, I sincerely appreciate your time, and we'll look forward to coming back to the, the board and the staff at a future date to further discuss these opportunities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there really any questions for Mr. Jimenez? I guess we're gonna let you off easy.
All righty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Juvenile Probation Office. Mr. Chris Arvidson is going to give us a little update on the surveillance and GPS program.
Hi there. Commissioner Staff, how are you? I am replacing Margaret today. Margaret, as well, as a lot of people do know, that she's taken another job with the adult drug court.
She's better looking.
Excuse me?
She's better looking.
No.
She's better looking?
No. No, no, sir. We'll argue that one later. Currently, we have three monitors that are working for the, with, with our kids. Three days out of the week, we have one monitor that is going out. The other four days, we have two monitors that are going out. At any time, those numbers could change depending on activities that are going on, events that are going on, or should something arise, there's, the guys can usually coordinate themselves to have somebody come out and assist them. Presently, Sundays, there's one day, Tuesdays one day, Thursdays there's one day, the other days, there's two monitors that are out. For the month of April, current stats, clients that are on court-ordered probation, we have 22. Informal probation, we have 19. And our courtesy program, we have 12 clients currently being supervised in that. Clients are ranging from Tyron to probably the Vinadium outside of Bayard areas at this time. We've had them as far as, as far as Mimbres, of course, in the past, not necessarily in the Cliff area. In the past, with the, with the Mimbres kids, Mr. Mice, Officer Deputy Mice has been more than willing to assist us with clients out there. Numbers have just been low out there at this time. Our bracelets to date, we have two unrecovered bracelets at this time, one being in January, report has been done, and I can't give you the exact date on the other one, but it's been a couple of years at this point. We're currently running five-county bracelets, which are all, all being utilized on, on the informal client. clients, and then our contractors will utilize them on the informal or the courtesy clients. Those have really seemed to help in the prevention area. Last night, I unfortunately made a trip to La Plata for one of my eldest children, becoming a sixth grader. Mr. Mendonza did speak about the courtesy program out there and basically notified, I don't know, a lot of parents. And of course, my kid looked up at me when the incorrigible word came up and said, "Really?" It's like, "Yeah." So that program has been pushed quite a bit lately, the courtesy program. I don't deal with the courtesy program as much, but it seems like daily or every other day, there's new referrals coming in, which I feel that one's been very successful there. To date, on the bracelets, we have had a total of sixty-three of the county bracelets being utilized, and those do range from the informal client, the courtesy client, and the formal client. I got ahead of myself, sorry. An average day has been about, an average day has been about nineteen days on the bracelets. This, this one here would be only for the kids that are on court-ordered probation. For the cost to detain fifteen of those formal clients, an average of those nineteen days, the cost would have been twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five based on a cost of a hundred and five per day, which costs range differently from detention center to detention center across the state. We've had good steel cooperation from the county, the city. I believe State Police has even assisted at times with our transportation. Unfortunately, the time, Luna County, Doniana's not available, Gallup is in our next one. There's been a lot of good cooperation with Gallup that I hear from, from others that they've agreed to work with us and meet our officers halfway, our deputies halfway, and do an exchange there, and that's been very beneficial, especially when we've been short-handed nighttime runs, late evening runs. Fiscal year June to, to current March, we have had a hundred, a hundred formal clients being surveilled, two-hundred-and-nineteen, I mean, excuse me, a hundred informal clients, two-hundred-and-nineteen formal clients, and sixty courtesy clients being seen at this time. Four thousand three hundred and fifty-four visual contacts have been made, had five hundred and thirty-five attempted visual contacts. Some of those attempted visual contacts simply are the child was not home, but most of, but those are excusable ones, whether it was a miscommunication with JPO to inform, to the surveillance officer. Emergencies have happened. They've stayed over late at a class, a nighttime class that some of the kids are ordered to attend, and there was no miscommunication there. Total contacts from June to March thirty-first has been four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight contacts done. There's been eighty-seven violations. Out of those contacts, there's been six detainments where the surveillance officer had a violation actually occur, could have been, could have been an arrest warrant that was issued and contact was made with a client. And there's been twenty drug tests conducted throughout those contact, visual contacts that have made, been made in the field. We try to really get the drug test done at ours by the probation officer unless something comes up for an emergency or the surveillance officer has suspicion that the child may be under the influence of something. Any questions?
Yes. Because I know you guys are busy, but I was wondering if you could get to us a spreadsheet of your use of your electronic devices and also your surveillance and give us some numbers that would, it would help me, I know, to have an idea of where you're at and such, so whenever we do come up for funding and stuff, we'll know pretty much what is happening. And so we would have that available to us. So if you could do that for us, I'd appreciate it. No rush in it, but I'd like to see it.
So a spreadsheet on the GPS usage and a spreadsheet on surveillance?
Sure. Yeah. And something that would show the effectiveness or non-effectiveness of it and such, so we can gauge it.
Sounds good. And of course, we would, we would request continued support.
Mr. Arvidson, thank you very much for all you all do. You've got some really big shoes in the field, and I wish you a lot of luck in this position you're taking over now. So I thank you for, for working so hard to work with our youth.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
In a way. And I realize the job, I realize the job you guys did because of my last job as a judge, we used to have you guys all the time. I understand that procedure has changed.
Yes, sir.
But you used to be in the court quite often with juveniles and such, and so I know the work that you do and, you know, it's interesting too, the care that they have for these young men and women that they deal with. They truly do care, and that takes a lot out of a person, not just doing the job, but actually caring, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a great day.
You too.
Next item is the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber to give us an update on tourism at the visitor center. Hi, Sissy.
Hi, Sissy.
Uh, Sissy McAndrew. I'm the Executive Director of the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce and Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, and Community. It's a real honor to be here today. Got some good information for you. Our visitation is starting to go up from last year. We now do have comparative data. Our low was in January with seven hundred and forty-five visitors, and that is very weather-dependent. As soon as it gets cold or it gets ugly, people do not come up here. We get calls, "We'll, we'll come over when your weather's better than ours." So it does affect us rather dramatically. We will be having, right now, we've got over twelve thousand people to date, and so that's July through today and April. We will definitely break over the fifteen thousand mark for the year, and that is one of our standard goals right there, getting back up to where things used to be. We're really looking now a lot at what our daily averages are, and this month, it looks like we're gonna set a new high. Our low again in January was twenty-four point eight-three visitors per day, and April, we're at fifty-two point three-three. So it's going up. We are getting people from all fifty states, from all foreign countries. Those are really exciting people because a lot of times, they need to bring a translator in. They've done a lot of research online about Silver City and Grant County, and they come with specific questions. And that's what's great because the way we have the center set up now and the way that we have it staffed, we can give them the specific information that they need. We have a new visitor guide that's out. We'll be working on updating the map. We actually have it ready to go. We'll go to press with that in the new budget year. And that includes actually more of the county with the roads all the way out to Wind Canyon, coming out out to Arenas Valley, and then the map's flipped over, and it's more of that Grant County region that we've seen in the past. So we're looking forward to that. Also, we're seeing an increase in RVs again, and noticeable. I have a lot of people that come up and mention that to me. Some of that is in the marketing, and some of that, I think, is in the fact that the gas prices have dropped back down, and we're seeing more people touring in RVs. I mentioned to you the, the weather dependency, and we are working with the Town of Silver City on the Risk Assessment Committee, and that's looking at the impact of tourism on climate change. We're looking at what is, what are hotter temperatures, lower precipitation, extended drought, delayed monsoons, earlier springs, and warmer winters. How is that gonna impact tourism? We really feel, short of having wildfires, that it's actually gonna increase our tourism because we're seeing the warmer that it gets down in El Paso and Tucson and Phoenix, the more people are escaping up here for the cooler temperatures. So we're gonna continue to see that. We're trying to plan for that and anticipate how that's gonna impact us economically and also as far as the infrastructure for our, our area. We have a new Arts and Cultural District Director, George Julian Dwarren, and he's doing an absolutely wonderful job. The County Tourism Committee and Region Two of the State Tourism Committee, we're all working together and making sure that we're utilizing our marketing dollars and our resources to the best of ability, trying to drive more people to the webpage, which is going to reduce our need for as much as far as printed publications. We're also, I will be attending the New Mexico Governor's Conference on Tourism on May fifth through seventh, which gives us a lot of information on the statistics statewide. And after the legislative session, we're working closer with the, the state to really interpret what's going on in our southwest corridor and how we can better market together with the state dollars and our local dollars. The real estate market is up. The average, right now, we've got over fifty properties that are under contract, which is really great. Our low has been down in the twenties, and the high in the tail end of last year was in the seventies. But the realtors are feeling very, very positive, a lot more contacts both on the internet and people coming to town and looking. So the word is back out about Grant County and Silver City. We're also hearing a lot from the restaurants that their business is up. So although we're promoting by local, we also wanna be sure that we're starting to bring in outside dollars, and we're feeling that, that that is occurring. We're looking forward to hosting the Tour de la Gila, which of course, features all of Grant County. We've got the Cinco de Mayo that should be taking place downtown on Bullard Street on, of course, the fifth, and that's between one and seven PM. And the Green Chamber is partnering with the Grant County Chacano Music Project for that event, and we hope that that becomes an annual event. We have the Blues Festival coming up, and then Randy and John, of course, the Mr. and Mrs. Golf Tournament, which I'm sure you're gonna wanna participate in. Golf, again, is, is one of our untapped resources. We are seeing a lot of people, again, coming up from Tucson and Phoenix because of our cooler weather and the ability to usually just walk right up and get a tee time. Those people are coming up, they're spending multiple nights, and so we're also working on packages with, with a lot of the different lodging facilities so that we can get more dollars here to stay. Independence Day is always a big one here in Grant County. The Clay Festival, which was mentioned earlier today. Also, working with the Grant County Chacano Music Festival for the, the project is gonna have their Labor Day festivities, and that's gonna be a real big one for us. And then also working with Fort Baird Days, the county fair, and we've been talking to try to see if there's any way of revitalizing mining days. We'd like to recognize the impact that mining has to our economy and see what we can do to, to revitalize that event from the past. We're also working with a lot of conferences that are looking at coming here and scheduling into late two thousand thirteen, early two thousand fourteen. So we're getting those calls and then working with the planners to try to set up different events, different locations for their meetings and so on. So that's gonna be bringing us more economic development there. Also, with the Arts and Cultural District, we coordinated in their Memorandum of Understanding. They had their fifth year review. We looked at the successes, and now what we're looking at is really setting up more of the trails so that, like the scenic byways, these are trails that will link Silver City with other communities throughout the state, looking at art trails, food trails, the clay trail, motorcycle trails, all sorts of ways that we can get people to come in to Silver City and then go spread that out to other cities. Finally, we're just really trying to coordinate throughout the community in working together to creating and building a sustainable economy, and we really feel that we're turning the corner. We really appreciate the opportunity, and we will continue to come back here quarterly and let you know the results, but we think we're on the upturn here, and we just continue to hope to climb. Are there any questions?
Any questions there?
Yes, Sissy, I may, for me, what do you find that, I don't know if you have the records, but the biggest draw to Silver City? What are they looking for? History? They're looking for sites, or what are they looking for?
Well, we're getting a real cross-section there. Most people come in, they're interested in seeing our historic and cultural resources. They're also interested, and that does include the Cliff dwellings is a big draw. We also have quite a few people now that are coming actually for the restaurants. We're getting known for having a high-quality fine dining in independent restaurants. You, you get to have more original and personal experiences here than you can other, other places. So the quality of our rural community is a key factor. The number one way people are finding out about us is still family and friends. So we realize providing a quality experience so that they're gonna go talk to others about it is one of the key things we can do. We're also using a lot of social media now, so there's Facebook, Twitter, all sorts of sites out there, creating a buzz about us, and that's gonna really carry things a long way. One thing that George, the Arts and Cultural District, is working on is also finding out why do people move here? What do they like about it here? As we get that word out, that's what's gonna attract more people here that have a common mind and common values, and, and that's what we hope to do too, is to continue to have the quality of life that we have that Grant County is known for, not change that at all, but find people that wanna come experience us for who we are.
And then too, a couple others is that, it was interesting, you was talking about the RV increase. Are we RV-friendly in this county?
Well, we are. Again, that depends on the weather.
Yeah.
In the winter, people will stay down along I-Tan at Demme because that ten, ten-degree difference reduces their propane use. So they'll come up here for day trips, they don't stay up here. But as soon as the weather gets warmer, then we see our RV parks are filling up. Of course, now the forest is, is opening up, the campgrounds are opening up. So it is weather-dependent, but the RV parks are all seeing an increase in visitation as well.
Okay. I think that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sissy, for coming by and giving us that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just do wanna put one more plug in. We're always looking for volunteers, and we, we find, Ali actually working at the visitor center this afternoon. It is really rewarding to be able to share your community with others, so I'd like to encourage anybody to come on down. We have interns we're working with right now from all the Leopold and the Workforce Program and the university, but we'd love to have more community involved in the volunteer process.
Okay. I think I've got another question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sissy, for all that you do. You have a, you have a lot on your plate, but you know, you mentioned a lot of these vibes and the, and the Blues Festival and stuff, but how about as I look out and see some of the Forest Service, how are we going about that when we talk about hunting and fishing and getting into our national forests and, you know, one of our, sort of, in the United States?
Well, we have a really great relationship. We have a direct link over to the Forest Service site because we, that what, we're trying to do that more often with the university, with special projects that are going on. People are setting up their own webpages as well and projects. That way, we don't have to try to stay up to date with all of that. But the Forest Service is a wonderful resource, and then we have backup materials on weekends when they're not open. We are continuing to work with the Catwalk, Glenwood, trying to do all weekend to, to keep tourism alive up there, and we're starting to see things turn around, and we are touring a lot of people up through that back route to try to keep the dollars moving up to Katron County.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove the acceptance of Viva Santa Rita petition to create an improvement district. I know Lonnie has already spoken to me by asking questions for him, or if you'd like to say something else, you're welcome to.
Yes, I'd just like to just say, I was very happy with the, the numbers that we got from our subdivision. We had, I think when it's all said and done, we're gonna have ninety percent approval, and everybody was really happy and good about this situation, and they're doing really well. I think we're gonna end up with ninety percent, ninety-three percent of the people approving the thing, and we're waiting on two people they live on in New Jersey, landowners from New Jersey, which we didn't know, but I just wanted to mention that, that everybody was real happy and.
It's always nice when we get to do something where you're happy and we're happy too.
I mean, everybody was excited. I mean, everybody is excited, and they're still excited, so.
All right. Well, I'm excited.
We're on board. So thank you very much. They, I know we wanted to express, I ran into neighbors and they said, "Hey, say thanks."
Okay. Thank you very much, Lonnie. Okay. Let's accept. Okay, let's accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to see, being that you're in your district and you've worked so hard on this issue, I want to see maybe you'd want to make the motion.
That'd be fine. I would like to move that we approve the acceptance of the Viva Santa Rita petition to create an improvement district.
Second.
There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the Viva Santa Rita petition to create an improvement district, and is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
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 I'm sorry.
My only question is, will this assessment be put, like, on their tax bills or is it going to be built separate?
On their tax bills.
Would that not require a hundred percent approval?
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, it requires two-thirds of the property owners to create an improvement district, and so that's what this statute is different than creating a county management, which is the hundred percent.
All right. So anyway, Lonnie, it's been approved, so they'll start the next process. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove fiscal year 2014 County Fire Protection Fund distribution applications for the following volunteer fire departments: Cliff Gila, Fort Bear, Lower Members, Penosatos, Santa Rita, Sapien Creek, Tyrone, Upper Members, Whiskey Creek, and the Grant County Fire Management Office. You don't have to read them all.
I would move to approve the list of fire departments that has just been mentioned for the fiscal year of 2014.
Nice thinking. The motion to approve the fiscal year 2014 Fire Protection Fund distribution application. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove policy number 56 from the Jack Kenny Sheriff's Department Standard Operating Procedures. This is video recording, photographing, and audio recording for the Sheriff's Department personnel by the public. The sheriff went over this, of course, on Tuesday, so if there's any questions for him, I'm sure he would answer them, otherwise I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve policy number 56 of the Grant County Sheriff's Department.
Second. There's a motion to approve policy number 56 of the Grant County Sheriff's Department. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go to contracts and agreement. Approve or disapprove the commercial lease amendment with Mountain Ridge Ace Hardware LLC?
Chairman, I would move to approve the commercial lease amendment with the Mountain Ridge Hardware LLC.
Nice thinking. There's a motion to approve the commercial lease amendment with Mountain Ridge Hardware. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have something?
I'm just going to reassure you that the changes that we discussed last night...
Okay, thank you. Item R, approve or disapprove resolution R-1327, supported the Cottage Sand Road Improvement Project Control Number 1100850.
Sheriff, I would move to approve R-1337, supported Cottage Sand Improvement Project Control.
Nice thinking. There's a motion to approve R-1327. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1328, declaring intent to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of up to $2.5 million for the Southwest Solid Waste Authority Improvement and refunding revenue bonds. And John, a couple of things have changed since we talked on Tuesday.
Yeah, Abby Robinson, bring the commissioners up to date. We did some language clarification and can't clarify.
Just really for clarification, I wanted it to be clear that it wasn't Grant County issuing bonds, that it was the authority. So in the title, we changed just a little bit, instead of saying, "authorizing issuance and sale of up to 2.5 Southwest Solid Waste Authority Improvement Refunding Revenue Bonds," we changed it to say "authorizing Southwest Solid Waste Authority to issue," so that it's clear that it's them, not us. Because like John explained on Tuesday, really our participation is really just refudging the same environmental gross receipts that we had already pledged in the past.
And that's even changed a little bit. Before, there was an intercept agreement where they took that directly away from it. Now we just have a pledge, so we get to actually keep that money.
So there's a little more flexibility there. John wants to describe?
Yeah, basically what will happen is we'll receive the environmental gross receipts tax currently is being intercepted by New Mexico Finance Authority for the loans that these bonds will pay off. Once they're paid off, it'll come directly to us, and what our pledge is, is we'll use that to offset our tipping fees. So currently, we pay the tipping fees out of the money that's collected from the residents, that $5 a month charge that we charge residents for solid waste. So what we'll be able to do is, as of yesterday, when we had the board meeting, we were at $157,000 this year in tipping fees. We typically collect about $140,000, I think, on this environmental gross receipts, $12140 is what Mark Franzuela was thinking. So we'll just say that the first $140,000 we pay them is that environmental gross receipts tax, which saves that other money for other improvements in the solid waste or other things we want to do. It's just saying that we'll be using that to pay that, is all that our pledge is, which doesn't hurt us at all.
Any questions on this? Okay, we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution of R-1328.
Second. There's a motion to approve R-1328. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, approve or disapprove resolution R-1329, authorizing Grant County to enter into an agreement with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, non-metro area agency on aging for 2012 through 2016, a four-year plan. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, as we spoke about this on Tuesday, this is the current plan we're operating under, and they've just come back to us and asked that the commission approve this resolution. We're currently operating under this plan. It's just in their files, they didn't have this, and this is something they wanted, and that's why they've come back and asked for the resolution, saying we'll participate.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution R-1329.
Nice thinking. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve R-1329. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I take a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Hello.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Indigent and Healthcare Claims Board. First item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove March 2013 health plan claims on the indigent. John, you want to go over what we're actually going to do?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just researched since we talked on Tuesday, and I found out that the approval of these claims does not affect that quarterly payment that we were talking about. That quarterly payment is just sent every quarter. We automatically send that payment up. So by approving all of the claims, what that's doing is just sending up there and saying this is a draw on that money that they're currently holding, and it'll also let us pay these out-of-county claims to the indigent people. The sole community provider, we found out some more information, a little more, we're trying to get some more information as we speak. We've made some contacts, they're going to get back to us. Currently, what we're hearing is they're still held up. It's between the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services, which is referred to a lot of times as CMS, and the state of New Mexico. What it basically was is that, what we're finding out, what has happened is, going back about, I think, ten years, the state was taking, and the supplemental monies that were received each year, what happens is, there's a distribution done, and if everybody doesn't have enough gross receipts tax or enough match money to claim their full distribution, they take that extra money that's left on the table from those people and they reallocate it back to the areas that have enough money to claim more distribution, and their formulas allow them to. What's been happening, it appears, is that each year, instead of rolling that supplemental back out of the monies those counties or those hospitals have received, the state has added it in and used it to calculate the next year's payments and then added a supplemental on top of that. And so that's why you've seen every year, as the hospital comes to the commission asking for their sole community provider funds, that number's been growing each year because the state's been incorrectly adding that in. So Center for Medicaid and Medicare has come back and said, no, that should have been subtracted out, and you should have started back at the base number for the next year, and then if there was monies left over, do another supplemental. So that's what they're trying to figure out, how do they correct that? We're hearing those numbers could be very large for the state of New Mexico. The effects on our hospital, just by the hauled-back piece, like we've talked before, is right now they have about an $8 million receivable that hasn't been paid to them. They've been assured that something will be figured out and paid to them. They said they've heard numbers of seventy-five, we're trying to find out, seventy-five percent, we're trying to find out more information for them, as well as they are trying to find out, and we spoke with the senator and their representative, and they're also going to try and find out some information. So we can see when that money's going to be released to the hospital, because the hospitals now, they're being demanded to pay the quarterly payments, but when our next one comes up, if the monies haven't been released, I think a lot of the hospitals, the counties are going to say, wait a minute, we're not paying any more, because our contributions as Grant County are a little, they're close to $5 million that we pay up to receive $18 million back. So we're...
That's between the hospital and the county.
Yeah, yeah, they're all sent from the county, but the hospital will match some money with us and send it up, so...
I just didn't want to think there was $5 million coming from here.
No. And so we're working on that with the other counties. We've got the Association of Counties involved, and so we're trying to get help, everybody get on the same page and figure out what's going on with Sole Community Provider, but by approving the claims, it doesn't affect what's going on there, it just gets these numbers up there so they can show there is still a demand for Sole Community Provider. This money needs to be paid down.
John, go ahead.
John, this negotiation you're talking about, that's not with the feds, that's with the state, right?
Originally, the negotiation that is, the main negotiation that's happening is between the State Department of Human Services and the federal CMS, Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. That's where the negotiation is, how do they fix this discrepancy? Then the Department of Human Services is supposed to be negotiating with all the hospitals and the counties on getting that money down to them, and they're the ones that have held the payments, the state. The, no, the state has held back our quarterly payments, yes.
They've got a whole lot.
We paid Department of Human Services the quarterly payment, and then they're the ones that submit back, because they get money from the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services.
So has the Center of Medicaid sent the state their money?
Not to my knowledge.
They're holding theirs too.
Yeah, so it's...
I got another question. And only answer this if you know for sure.
Yes.
Okay. Do you know if that receivable is reflected in the hospital's profit and loss?
Not real sure. I've spoke with them, they've told me what their bottom line number is, but I can't tell you if it's true, if it's in there, because I didn't get a real clear picture. I asked the question a couple of times, but I didn't understand, so I'm still trying to find that out.
That's kind of hot. Any other questions? All right. So I guess we'll go ahead, and your advice is to approve these...
Yes, my recommendation to the commission is that we approve the sole community provider and the indigent claims that are brought in front of you, the 1,053 claims totaling
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the claims for...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the March 2013 health plan claims.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the March 2013 health plan claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'll take a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent and Healthcare Claims Board.
Go move.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, and we'll stand for county reports. Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman, before we go into the sheriff, can we have Mr. Gabriel Huguen give us a report on any fires out in the forest or any report that he wants to help us out?
Absolutely, if you want to do that, we can do that. Come on up, Gabe.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity. I just wanted to give you a quick briefing on actions the Gila National Forest has taken to prepare for this fire season, including engagement with the local VFDs to help homeowners prepare in the event there's a wildfire that would affect them. So, you know, we've been really busy in the last couple of weeks trying to get ready for this fire season, and I've met with all our district rangers, including Glenwood and Silver City, the ones in Grant County, and to talk about our strategy for wildland fire management this season. And the consensus, based on the drought conditions that we're seeing, you know, the, basically based on that, the conditions that are out there on the forest right now are pretty extreme, you know, the drought continues to intensify, and so our strategy this year is going to be to suppress any wildfire fires that are started by lightning or, of course, human-caused fires. And, you know, so that's going to be our strategy early on, you know, with the, if the monsoons come in and when they, you know, depending on how robust they are and how much moisture we actually get out of the monsoons this year, we may look at managing wildfires for, other than suppression, you know, for the benefits that they do create, because, you know, there are a lot of benefits here in the Southwest. It's a fire-adapted forest, and, you know, so we take advantage of opportunities when the conditions are right, you know, to burn up some of those ground fuels, the branches, the pine cones, the pine needles, everything that's accumulated over the years. You know, that's, fire is basically our decay process here in the Southwest, and without it, we accumulate fuels and we'd have, you know, much larger, much more catastrophic fires, a lot more smoke output. So we do look for those opportunities, but like I said, the conditions have to be right. And this season, we don't anticipate that we're going to see those conditions until after the monsoons come. So between now and monsoons, we're going to be aggressive in suppressing anything that gets started on the forest. So I just wanted to share that with you. The other part of it is that we're engaged with the local volunteer fire departments, and Commissioner Hall, you had asked me to come back and talk about, you know, things that homeowners could do to help prepare for fire season. Well, you know, I believe that we're in fire season now, and so what we're talking to the VFDs about at this point is, you know, the focus is on evacuation. You know, we're talking to our VFDs and hoping that they're going out to the public and talking to them about, you know, the steps in the evacuation. And the big things that we're looking, that we want to get across to them is, you know, in the event of a wildfire, you know, the things to consider is when to leave, where to go, how to get there, and what to take. You know, we don't, it's an advantage to us and to them if they leave early, you know, in the event that a fire's going to affect their home. You know, it certainly improves their chances of surviving that wildfire, and also it helps firefighters to get in there and not have to worry about running into, you know, cars that are trying to evacuate, and we saw some of that on the Quell Ridge Fire, you know, it was fairly orderly, thanks to the Sheriff's Department and our law enforcement officers, and we want to continue that, you know, we want to be prepared for that. And so we have the Ready, Set, Go program, and I have some brochures that I can leave with you, but this is basically a publication put together by the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and it's not a federal publication, it's not a Forest Service publication, it's what our volunteer fire departments have put together, and it's a very handy publication. It tells you what to do to help get ready for, you know, help to prepare before the wildfire comes, during the wildfire, and the evacuation process. So it's a very useful publication. I have a bunch of them I'd like to leave with you, and you can distribute them however you want. But the source of the publication is through the volunteer fire departments, actually. So, you know, I just, just a plug to continue, for you guys to continue to support the volunteer fire departments, because they are the county's initial attack, if you will, on wildland fires here within the county. So, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, just a couple of statistics for you. If wildfires, homes that burn down during wildfires, fifty-five percent of those homes, the source of ignition is in the ember. It's not... the source of ignition is in amber. It's not a direct flame front from the fire. Only five percent of homes that burn down are from a direct flame front. So I think, I believe that's a misconception out there. You know, a lot of folks believe that it's the big wall of flames that's coming that's going to get their house. Well, it's not. It's the embers that can be lofted from the fire front up to about a mile away. So, you know, it's really critical to clean the gutters out and to, you know, if you can, put them, you know, look at the composition of your roof, because that's a huge ignition source. If it's wood shake shingles or, you know, any sort of flammable material. So, you know, those are the things that, things that people ought to think about in preparation for fire season. You know, like I said, at this point, we're already there, so the focus is on the evacuation. But I just wanted to share those statistics with you. So, any questions?
There was some helicopter activity and some haze in our mountains. I don't know if it was dust or controlled burn. Do you know?
Yeah, there's, there was a controlled burn on the Apache Sitgreaves National Forest that was supposed to be happening this week. So I think some of that may have been that, you know, as far as activity here on the forest, we've had several human-caused fires, or suspect human-caused fires, because we haven't had any lightning. Most of them have been up by Luna and Reserve in that area. I think we've had three or four. But here in Grant County, we had, at least on the forest or close to the forest, that was a threat to us on the national forest. We had one in the Feeley subdivision, up past Little Walnut. And that one was a big bonfire, and there was trash, you know, that was, that was, you know, scattered about. So we're not, you know, we're suspecting it was human-caused, but we put it out and, you know, didn't have any control problems with that one, so. But as far as resources go, we do have our helicopters on, we do have our engine crews on and available. We have our two hot shot crews available. And we have, at the beginning of May, we will have a heavy helicopter, type-one helicopter, which is capable of delivering a lot more water. That will be here May first. So, and we also have an air tanker sitting at the Grant County Airport right now. So we're prepared. We feel like we're in a good place right now.
Have you felt the sequester as far as your fronts are concerned?
You know, we're staffed at the same levels that we were in two thousand twelve, so we're feeling pretty good about where we're at.
We appreciate you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I encourage, as a Tyrone volunteer firefighter, I might want to speak for our chief, but we had it at Tyrone, and it talked about those evacuations. So I encourage, you know, property owners, homeowners associations, to get together and reach out to those Ready, Set, Go because I was involved in that Quail Ridge Fire, and he talks about the frying fields or the embers, and so many people have wood stacks, you know, in the back door. And when we went to those homes, you know, that's what was on fire. And people don't realize, it might be easier because you don't want to go out in the cold to get a piece of wood, but in the long run, it's probably going to save your home and probably save your life as well. So the other thing was, because it's been so dry, some of those frying fields aren't as high as they've been in the past. Is that going to help? Can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, that's definitely going to help. You know, we have areas that have either been, you know, grazed or the grass just isn't there because we haven't had the moisture to grow grass. So, you know, there's areas, it's varied, it varies. I mean, there's places where there's no grass, and then there's places where there's, you know, plenty of grass. And also, if you get into the timber field types, you know, which is higher elevation, but we do have some ponderosa pine down lower, where, you know, within the wildland urban interface. And so, you know, I would say the timbered areas, you know, the fire spread is less dependent on the grass and probably more so on the pine needles and that sort of thing. But, you know, under the pineon juniper areas, there's less grass in general, I would say. Yeah, so that's going to be helpful. Yeah.
John?
I just want to say that I know a couple weeks ago, Western's football team went out into the neighborhoods and did some defensible space cleaning. And they actually, we worked with them to have a forty-yard roll-off. So it's basically like a forty-foot long dumpster brought here. And they filled it, plus put basically about half of it on the ground, another half full dumpster on the ground, that they cleaned up so many yards. And then they also took a bunch to the landfill. So they went through neighborhoods, there was no cost to residents, and just did an amazing job. I was surprised at how much brush and grasses they took out of yards to try and help build that defensible space. So that was really commendable, that football team to help out the residents. And we need more of that in the off-season, not waiting until the fire starts and you start trying to go clean.
I would agree, yeah. And just another comment, yesterday I did a fire readiness inspection on the Glenwood and the Silver City Ranger districts. And, you know, I had an open discussion with not only the supervision out there on those engine modules and hand crew modules, but also with just the firefighters, you know, the guys that are actually on the ground taking care of business. And, you know, I asked the question, do you guys feel like there's been any improvement from the public as far as being responsible for their own welfare during a wildfire? You know, because the state has that program where the cost share program, where, you know, they can get help to clear the brush and, you know, create the defensible space. And the general consensus was that yes, you know, they feel that for the majority of Grant County, homeowners are being responsible and, you know, and getting prepared for wildfires. So that was positive. I feel like that was a good step forward, so.
You know, since Gary retired, we've been missing our quarterly reports on weather and fire danger and all the extremes. And can you just kind of update us on that? Are we still in this truly extreme fire situation?
Yeah, I believe so, Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman. The, you know, the drought continues to intensify. I just got some data yesterday on our fuel conditions and our thousand-hour fuels, which are large logs, you know, which retain moisture the longest on the forest floor. They're probably at about seven percent, eight percent fuel moisture, which is extremely low. Our live fuel moisters are probably around eighty percent in the pineon and juniper and ponderosa pine, and, which is also extremely low. A hundred percent isn't the top of the range for our live fuel moisters, so that number's extremely low. I believe that we still have the potential, as we move forward into May and June, to have, you know, a season similar to last year, maybe even worse than last year. The conditions are just there. Our snowpack is way below normal, and most of it's melted off. You know, our, the flow in the Hila River is way below average, and that's based on the snowpack. So our live fuels are dry, our dead fuels are dry. It's just a matter of time before we get lightning. And our ERCs, which is our energy release component, that's kind of our seasonal trend or indices that we monitor. And that is right now at about seventy, seventy is the number on that, which is just below the ninetieth percentile. And so, you know, we're there. It's pretty extreme conditions out there right now.
And I just, one other thing, I appreciate you agreeing to help us with our search for our new fire management officer. We'll probably, I know that's out, and we'll probably be announcing something the next month or so on that. So I appreciate you helping us with that search so we can get some real wildland questions asked to him and properly vet the next person that's going to take that job, so.
Sure.
If there's nothing else, I really-
John, thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate you coming by and keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Okay, so then we'll move to the sheriff. Nothing?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Sess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the public that I did send out the notice of advice April eight. If you haven't received one by now, then there's a problem. I know that, you know, the clerk and also the treasurer, there's always issues with the mail. But I can't resend them if they come back to me, but they can come in and take a look at them. But they can get online at grantcountynm.com and look at the assessors and can review their evaluations there online. So that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Mr. Treasurer?
Yep. The only thing I'd like to do is remind our taxpayers that two weeks from tomorrow, May the tenth, is the deadline for paying their second half two thousand and twelve taxes without penalty and interest. So, let's, thank you.
Clerk?
I have nothing to report.
All right.
Yes, sir, I sure do. Next month, a big decision will be made by our local Forest Service Supervisor, and that's a travel management plan. You know, she's the only person that has control of what alternative that's going to take place and is going to affect everyone here in the near future and probably for a very long time. Of course, we're going to have disabled people, disabled veterans, disabled residents, hunters, hikers. And our economy is probably going to be hit if we shut down some roads in our national forest. You know, I am requesting that our supervisor approve the no-change alternative until we have a true EIS, environmental impact study. The environmental impact study is very flawed, and it's hard to make a decision on flawed information. Miss Supervisor of the Hila National Forest, you're the only person responsible for the alternative chosen that will affect all the people in our area. I, Gabe Ramos, County Commissioner, District One, am requesting that you choose the no-change alternative until you, until your correct EIS study is available. I am requesting that you demand that your staff include all roads and all trails into the EIS so that the public and the local governments may have a true idea of what will be closed and what will remain open. A few meetings back, the true majority came to our meeting and protested to keep our plan as is. The loud minority has been organized by highly-paid individuals and highly-paid organizations. And they have been fighting the fight to close as many roads as possible. And I ask you to support the majority of our people here in Grant County. I am also asking for you to coordinate with the local governments and to make a val- so that we can make a valuable decision that's going to affect all our people here in Grant County. Our commissioners represent the constituency of Grant County, and I demand to be included in decisions made throughout our county, our county travel management, to make sure our constituents are very well represented. Let's make the, let's make the right decision and save our taxpayers a lot of money and avoid lawsuits and litigation. Let's make the right decision. People that moved to Grant County moved here because there was open space and open roads that we could always use, and they came here because they loved it. Let's keep the love for our forests and keep our roads open. I ask this of you as the County Commissioner, District One. Choose Alternative C until a correct EIS is available for our constituents. That's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Something I have, other than what we had in the study session, is this, I just want to echo what Gabe was talking about. The front line is our citizens. Our front line is when you go out camping, be careful. If you're a smoker, you know, be careful of that. If you're going to have a campfire, make sure that you can have a campfire. Make sure that whatever you're using, and if you're backing up into a grassy area with your vehicle, that you're not creating a fire. We are the front line. We are the front line, the people are. Make sure you build those barriers. Make sure that you are prepared. So, because you know what happens? A lot of times these firefighters come in and risk their lives because we have made a bad decision. Maybe not leaving, or putting our wood too close to our homes or such. We are the front line. And I just, please, be careful, be prepared, follow the pamphlet. I've seen it before, it's excellent. But they're there for us, but we're the front line, and we have to react first. So that's all I got.
John, I skipped you. You have anything? No, going as easy as you can.
We will.
But you know, one of my pet peeves has been solid waste, and solid waste fees, solid waste. And Randy and I got a chance to go to a really nice little deal in Santa Fe last week for illegal dumping. The environment department's stepping up. And if we can get the lights, I'm going to go ahead and show you these PSAs that we got to see with these kids. Maybe. Maybe not. Let's take a short recess and, not there it is. Is that as high as it goes? Well, that's not really working, but what it is, is it's four PSAs, and I brought this back to give to cats. And what it does is it basically goes through four different scenarios of kids being out in the, wherever, and looking and finding illegal dumps, like they are right there. This is just messing up New Mexico. It's messing up Grant County. It's messing up Silver City. And it's giving you the one eight five five no-dumps number, or the website, which will come up in a second, that you can call when you find an illegal dump, and the environment department will investigate. And hopefully, we can clean up New Mexico, Silver City, Grant County. Like I said, you guys all know that this has been one of my pet peeves, and you can walk any trail within a hundred yards of the road in Grant County and find something that looks just like this. Because people are just too, I guess, lazy to go to the dump or whatever. NoDumpsNM.com is the website, so. I guess we can just stop that now. That's all I have today, so.
Mr. Chairman, are they helping out people that have private property and getting the illegal dumpings on them?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know. I mean, illegal dumping happens on private property. It happens on public property. I was actually over near the railroad in Hanover the other day and found a couple of illegal dumps. Because that's why we're trying to get a transfer station up there along with our new fire station to hopefully alleviate some of that. I have no answer for that question. Did you, did they say anything about that, Randy? I don't think they care.
I think you just had the number that you can call, and then they would give you the information on how to go about the cleanup. But did you want to mention who the public state funders are? I mean, now it's important.
You know, I don't have that list.
I think it was Forest Service-
Forest Service BLM, State Land Office, the Recycling Coalition, the Association of Counties, and that's why we're involved. And there were some other-
It's just a collaborative effort by all people involved and all organizations that want to see, you know, clean up New Mexico. And there's no better way to promote that, is with our youth being out there in those areas and finding that kind of stuff. And there'll be radio ads as well, all over the state. These are for commercials. They're also going to be done in Spanish, on some of the Spanish networks. They'll be done in Native American language, I think, up in the northwest part of the state. So it's a collaborative effort by everybody in New Mexico, along with the governor's office, trying to get, you know, trying to get, you know, these illegal dumps stopped and at least cleaned up, and as we go forward.
Where do you find illegal dump?
I don't know off the top of my head. Typically, what happens if we find an illegal dump, Mr. Hilton, our code enforcement officer, will work with the environment department, which that's what this does, which when you call those numbers. And then they work on it and help him, and they take it over. So that's typically what we do. And he just coordinates with them and is, helps anything that they need to do, but they turn it over to them. So I don't know those fines.
Would it be more effective to have a commercial made here in Grant County of some of the legal dumps here? I know there's a big one, and maybe that's something we ought to start looking at.
But, and what I was going to say is at the Solid Waste Authority meeting yesterday, the legal dump is not just to be fined in Aurora, to put it in. It's also when the landfill is closed at the Tri-City landfill, and everybody dumps their trash into the gravel pit, which is run by a contractor for the behalf of Grant County and the residents, dumping it there- and, dumping it there is illegal dumping as well.
That's a great-
That's, yeah, and so, you, you can't just do it, um, I've caught people coming here to the admin building, on a weekend, I come in, when we used to have the old dumpsters that were out, um, I, one time I pulled in, there was a Toyota pickup truck that had trash stacked six feet high, and it tried to head towards our dumpster, as I pulled in, and then as they left, I was leaving too, and they turned towards the hospital instead of going to the landfill, so they were trying to find somewhere else to dump their trash. I know everybody used to do it at Albertson's before, was the big thing on Roaddale Road, you'd drop your trash at Albertson's, that's all illegal dumping, because it's not your right to dump in any dumpster, that's why we have the landfills.
Absolutely.
Our citizens have to be vigilant, too, when you see someone doing this, like John, is to report them, get a license number.
Clean up Grant County. That's what I'm saying, clean up Grant County.
Pickup, pickup.
That's all I have to say.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I can say.
Is that it?
I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, folks, for your time.